We will call the meeting to order. Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order. Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order. Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order. Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order. Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
We will call the meeting to order.
Mr. Ruestaller, can I get you to lead us in the flag?
Commissioner Midgley. That concludes roll call, all present.
Do you have actions on request or continuance or withdrawals? At this time, the public is welcome to address the Planning Commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Comments to the... You have one item?
Yes, we have one item submitted and I'll be reading it to record. It is from the Dillon and Murphy Engineering, May 20, 2020. Dear Commission members, regarding PA-1600084 Ashley Ranch Time Extension. I watched your May 7 hearing online so I could understand the new procedures. I noticed an item on consent to allow a time extension that was submitted after the initial application had expired. The project was recommended for approval due to unforeseen circumstances. Your commission rightfully approved the request. I find my client and myself in the exact same predicament. It is impossible to describe the issue, PA-1600084, in 250 words, but I will try. I submitted a time extension application approximately one month before the expiration date. I can only assume that somehow accidentally got lost. In conversation with Mr. Kwong, he said he believed I submitted it, but his planner has no record of receiving it. His recommendation was to resubmit and start the project entirely over. I respectfully request to be put on your next available agenda for an action item to grant an after-expiration time extension as you did on May 7. Obviously, a predicament has been set. I'm sorry, a precedent has been set. I can give you all my supporting data. The consequences of starting over will result in at least $75,000 in fines, approximately a year delay, and the loss of sale of at least nine lots that are already reserved for sale. This subdivision is 100% built and is simply waiting for the improvements to be accepted. They can't be accepted without the granting of a well-deserved time extension. To start the project entirely over is unreasonable and the consequences of a delay are unjustified. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Joe Murphy. This concludes the item.
Any comments or opinions?
Yeah, I would like to ask a couple of questions. And, um, why is it true that, uh...
Commission, Chair, you'll duly note that when comments are made, you certainly can respond with non-substantive comments, but it's not agendized. So discussing it in substance, anything beyond later bringing up maybe directing staff to bring it back as an agendized item or to request that it be agendized would be a violation of the Brown Act. So if you could keep any comments that you do opt to have or questions in the non-substantive realm, I would appreciate it.
Okay, so, as duly noted, so when within the proceedings could I ask that the staff look at bringing this back as an agendized item?
So that is generally best under Commissioner comments.
Thank you.
All right, move on. Action item, consent item number one. Items calendar for consent will be approved in one motion without a public hearing unless a member of the Planning Commission or the audience requests that the item be removed from the consent calendar and heard separately. Have a motion?
I have a statement on that.
So that's also in your package as well, and we will be able to explain a little bit further in our staff presentation. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
That's the wrong one. Yes. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. This project is a development title text amendment application to revise Chapter 9-1080, Agricultural Mitigation, to improve the county's ability to carry out the purpose and intent of the chapter. If approved, this text amendment will be applicable countywide and pertains to all properties that convert agricultural lands to urban uses since the ordinance became effective in 2006. In 2006, the Board of Supervisors established the current agricultural mitigation ordinance and the Agricultural Technical Advisory Committee, or AGTAC, to manage the program. The Community Development Department serves its staff to the AGTAC. In 2019, the AGTAC requested through the Community Development Department that the Board of Supervisors direct Community Development Department staff to make revisions to the ordinance to more effectively implement the program. The Board of Supervisors approved the request, and in January of this year, the AGTAC finalized their recommended changes, which are before you today. The AGTAC's recommended development title text amendment to change the agricultural mitigation ordinance includes revisions and additions to the language regarding the qualifying entity, AGTAC members and duties, mitigation bank, and minor text changes. In 2016, the AGTAC looked into designating a qualifying entity to hold the agricultural easements for the purposes of meeting the agricultural mitigation requirements. Specifically, the AGTAC worked with the Central Valley Farmland Trust, which is now referred to as the California Farmland Trust, or CFT. However, they were unable to reach a consensus, and the AGTAC is now recommending that the agricultural mitigation ordinance be updated to favor the county as a qualifying entity through the following recommended changes. First of all, the AGTAC is recommending that county records be updated to reflect which parcels within the county have an agricultural easement for the purposes of meeting the agricultural mitigation requirement. This would allow county staff to ensure that only allowable activities are permitted on property under such an easement. The AGTAC is further asking that the ordinance be revised to allow landowners who have granted an agricultural easement to use the property as allowed in the general agricultural zone as long as the activities do not negatively impact the agricultural productive capacity. In addition to these recommended changes, the AGTAC is recommending that the annual monitoring, inspection, and reporting that is currently required of the qualifying entity be removed and that the enforcement requirements be updated to reflect the existing code enforcement process already contained in the county code. In addition to revising the language pertaining to the qualifying entity, the AGTAC is recommending that changes be made to the makeup and duties of the committee. The committee is organized to be comprised of nine members with three each appointed by the San Joaquin Farm Bureau Federation, the Building Industry Association, and the Board of Supervisors. Their request is to reduce the number of members to six, with two members being appointed by each of those bodies. The membership terms would also be adjusted to correspond to the reduction. The AGTAC is also recommending that the committee duties be updated to permit more flexibility and allow the committee to carry out tasks as deemed necessary rather than on a specified schedule. For example, the current ordinance states that the AGTAC would perform certain duties within one year of the original ordinance's adoption, such as development of a mitigation strategy, but this was not feasible and did not yet occur. The last notable revision is in regards to mitigation banks. Currently, the ordinance does not permit participation in a mitigation bank as a means of meeting the agricultural mitigation requirement. The AGTAC is requesting that the ordinance be updated to allow this as an option. In order to approve a development title text amendment, the Planning Commission must determine that the proposed text amendment is consistent with the general plan and any applicable master plan. The 2035 General Plan Land Use Goal LU-7 states that the county will provide for the long-term preservation of productive farmland to accommodate agricultural services and related activities that support the continued viability of the county's agricultural industry. Specifically, LU-7.10 states that the county shall continue to require agricultural mitigation for projects that convert agricultural lands to urban uses. And LU-7.12 states that the county shall maintain and implement the agricultural mitigation ordinance to permanently protect agricultural land within the county. The development title text amendment to revise the agricultural mitigation ordinance is consistent with these general plan goals and will continue to require agricultural mitigation for projects converting agricultural lands to urban uses through improvements to the process and the additional option of participation in an agricultural mitigation bank. In response to the proposed development title text amendment to revise the agricultural mitigation ordinance, the county received some no comment letters and emails and a letter from the Delta Stewardship Council and another letter from the Delta Protection Commission. Both agencies cited concern about the removal of the term "in perpetuity" from the ordinance. This phrase was contained in the original Section 9-1080.7C, disposition of land, which is now proposed to be Section 9-1080.6B. The original language read, "Interests in agricultural mitigation land shall be held in trust by a qualifying entity and/or by the county in perpetuity." The phrase "in perpetuity" was removed and in this section is recommended to be revised to focus on identifying land encumbered by an agricultural easement in county records. The phrase does not appear elsewhere in the original or revised ordinance. However, Section 9-1080.1 clearly states that the purpose and intent of the agricultural mitigation chapter is to implement the agricultural land conservation policies contained in the San Joaquin County General Plan and that this is related to permanently protecting agricultural land. The ordinance in no way indicates that the agricultural easement is temporary. Thank you, this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Any question or comments? Recommendation?
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission forward development title text amendment number PA-200004 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for approval based on the ability to make the required basis for development title text amendment.
Thank you, Megan.
Chair, may I interject something too? I just want to add that being here for six months and seeing the staff work on this, they've actually been working on this for years. And years of actually problem-solving issues with this development title and with the AGTAC committee. I thought some of them were going to be here today. One. But maybe they're online. But there's been a lot of collaboration between the building industry as well as the farming interests in getting to this point. And I'm not sure actually how many years, I thought it was like seven. But it's been actually very much resolution worked out going forward. And that's actually, you see the technical merits before you, but there was a lot of work and effort behind this effort to get to this point. So just want to make sure that the commission knew there was a lot of homework behind it. Thank you.
This time we'll open up the public. If anyone would like to call in. Favor of this amendment?
It was our understanding that the Chair of the AGTAC or one of the two vice chairs of the AGTAC was going to call in, so we just want to make sure you did hear the structure of the AGTAC, really a unique configuration. So we did want to make sure that for you to make a truly informed decision that either the Chair or the Vice Chair is going to be here. So we had the understanding they were going to do that. So if we can take just maybe a five-minute recess in order to make sure that if in fact they are trying to appear, that we can reach out to them. So let's look for the email. If we could take a quick one or five-minute recess in order to follow up on that, I think that'd be valuable.
Okay, we're recessed for five minutes. Meeting back in? Do we have anybody online? Being known, do we have anybody in opposition to this text amendment?
Joe's going to call in.
Yeah.
Joe Peterson will be calling in.
He was the former Chair of the AGTAC and he's now one of the co-vice chairs. Thank you. Yeah, and I'm going to send it to him again, just in case.
Okay, what do we want to do here? We have no, no opposition, no... Be favored to call in, we'll close the, close the public hearing and bring it back to the board?
You do have a few items if you did choose to wait for Mr. Peterson, or you could go ahead and table the item for now for later in the meeting.
Table, we're pretty much on the end here.
That's, that's true.
There was a, I just received the text from John Vexman that he was trying to call in. I don't know.
Can't be heard.
He can't be heard.
He's the other co-vice chair.
He was provided all of the information.
Yes, I forwarded him the invite that we had gotten with that information. Yes. Oh.
Also go to item three.
Okay, we'll put that one on hold. The only other action item. We'll come back to Planning Commissioners' comments. Pleasure of the board for Mr. Murphy's request. The other...
Because we had, this is the one that we sent them, which Jennifer sent me.
Do you'd like to have him present that the next meeting? Next meeting. June, June 4th. Is that agreeable with all the Commissioners? The vote?
They have called, because this is a joint...
That's probably the best. We need a vote on that or just some consensus of the Commissioners to bring it back on the fourth? I would like to see if there's any way to bring Murphy in here to talk to him.
Thank you.
I would recommend to do it by motion. I just think that always gives us the best record of what the...
Want to make a motion on that?
00084, Ashley Ranch Time Extension. And I'll make it available in the next, it's an action item on our next meeting, which is June 4th?
Yes, although if I understand your motion correctly, what you'd like to do is have the topics of the public comment agendized for a report to your board by staff?
Okay. Thank you for the correction. Thank you for the correction.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first by Mr. Ruustaller, a second by Mr. Grunske. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ruustaller?
Yes.
Commissioner Grunske?
Yes.
Commissioner Maury? Commissioner Midgley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. It's up on June 4th. Thank you. Okay, we have anybody online? Okay, good.
I apologize, I missed sending the number again to Joe. He just said that he tried and it didn't work, so he's coming to give it to me one more time.
Are we still on comments?
Yes, go ahead.
I had a question a while back. I think it was, it was an almond farmer, I want to say, in Escalon. He was trying to split his parcel. Kind of an arbitrary rule in there that if it's before 1969, he could, if you remember this kid, he had a, where are we at in that process? I think all of us said to look into it type thing, and because it was very arbitrary, maybe it was just a random number, 1969 or something.
There is a provision in the development title that allows for you to create parcels below zone minimum if the houses had existed on a parcel before, 1961. The specific date, I think, and I'm stoop to the law.
Okay.
Found in Chapter 9-610 Agricultural Zones. 9-610E, parcels for dwellings on same lot, single-family dwellings that were erected prior to February 9th, 1961. That's the date. And usually, if you have a home or a single-family dwelling that was erected before that date, I've seen it used in our development title. People have processed it with the minor subdivision application, but I'm not familiar with the gentleman you're talking about from Escalon.
They had brought it up, and then, do you guys remember this meeting as well? And we were trying to see the possibilities of removing that language, the kind of arbitrary date. I believe staff was gonna look into it, and so I was just kind of seeing what the next point in the process. Long-term, my major concern is the next-generation farmers are having a very hard time, I think you get a test to the land prices, Commissioner Hamilton, of getting anything out there, so removing that stipulation would be, open it up a little more for the kind of the next generation as well. So, that was my whole point on the whole.
I think from a historical standpoint, and I'm thinking that when they did a survey back in the early 60s for parcels and what the uses over the land, I think we've already determined that there were some houses that were erected before that date. So, there's a map for that, but we can review that at a later date.
We will review the minutes from that meeting, and we will update you at the next planning commission as to when we can bring a report back on that item. I do believe that was also an item that will be reviewed in the development title update by Diet and Batia, who are currently working on the development title update. So, I believe we were gonna take kind of a two-prong approach with that, but we'll look back at the minutes, and at the June 4th meeting, staff will update you on where that either report to you update is, or what some of the options will be in the development title update. That update will, of course, come to you probably multiple times over the life of that, and that would be a great example of where we would look to you to say, from a policy standpoint, do you think this is a good direction or not? So, we'll have that two-prong approach for you on that, so I appreciate the follow-up.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have Mr. Peterson on the line?
Yes, he's on the line now.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Go ahead, Joe.
This is Joe Peterson. Did you guys want me to just give you a quick update on what we're proposing here, or what were you looking for?
Yes, what, your feelings, your rundown on this?
Well, it's just a change, some changes to the AgTAC's ordnance. I think that the primary change was to create some flexibility in the easement. We had trouble getting the easement to work with the Central Valley Farm Land Trust. We tried both the development community and agricultural community, tried to create an easement that doesn't create more burdens for agricultural land. It actually gives them more freedoms. It just keeps them from putting rooftops and subdivisions and shopping malls on property. That should be the intent, not to restrict agriculture. And when we took that easement and got it done, the Central Valley Farm Land Trust wouldn't accept it. It wasn't restrictive enough for them. So, we tried to go with a different easement, as well as create more flexibility in letting farmers do an easement, as well as the developers purchasing easements. There's obviously more to the changes. There was a lot of changes made to the agreement. I'm sure you have a red line before you, but our committee all agreed that those changes were good changes to the ordinance.
Okay, thanks for your comments, Joe. Any more comments? I'm sorry.
Not by me. I mean, I thought I was just gonna be here for more for questions, if there was questions that came up.
Any questions from the Commissioners? We're good, thank you.
Okay, sorry I didn't make it in there today.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing part of this session and bring it back to. Or motion.
Through the Chair? Commissioner Hamilton, we just want to make sure that the comments that were proposed by the Delta Stewardship Council in perpetuity do get included into the language, and staff didn't have an issue with that. We just want to make sure that's clear in the record.
Thank you, John.
Okay, I have a que, I thought you were. Out.
We didn't have that, we didn't have a particular issue or concern at this time. We just wanted to raise that to make sure that everyone was aware that the Delta Stewardship Council, there's language in there, in their mitigation, that if we do include that, that there's no conflict.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Hey, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we forward the Development Title Text Amendment Number PA 20000004 to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation for approval based on the ability to make the required basis for Development Title Text Amendment.
Have a second, second.
And any kind of necessary response to those letters. So, I want to make sure I'm clear as well, as you're making a recommendation moving forward to the Board, what our response is, so.
Okay, I want to make sure that through Council that we're clear, and she's shaking her head over that.
Not clear.
It isn't clear, because the discussion that we've had was that we didn't really have a concern, but the language shouldn't be in there because of the issue. I just want to make sure, because you're reading me, Zoe, and I'm reading you back and forth, we're looking at each other, I just want to make sure I'm clear here, so. Thank you, Zoe.
And I apologize if today feels a little, we've had a lot of wonkiness on this item with the delay. So, when staff provided you their recommendation, their recommendation was drafted in the staff report prior to the comments that came in from the Delta Stewardship Council. The Delta Stewardship Council's letter, again, we've had very little time to digest it, but I have reviewed it, and I believe what staff is saying is that they do not have a problem with the comments, with the letter in terms of the mitigation of our ordinance, keeping the easement in place in perpetuity. However, the Delta Stewardship language says to take out the red line and to keep the existing language. I don't know if that is what staff is recommending, or if staff is alternatively recommending the red line language with the addition, and that red line language, I will find in just a second, with the addition of in-county records recorded on title of the property.
We wanted to. So, in-county records, that was the clarification.
It currently says identified in-county records. Delta Stewardship has identified that as being insufficient for their purposes, for the congruent goals required, the mitigation, under Delta Stewardship Council rules. We are bound by that as is the property owner. So, I believe what staff is looking to do is to say, so they identified in-county records and on the property's title, or on title of property.
On title's property.
So, right now, as I understand the proposal, whenever, not as I understand the proposal, an easement bill will be recorded on title. So, it, for all intensive purposes, is in perpetuity, because it is on title. However, an easement can be transferred, there are various things that could happen. Delta Stewardship has read our language and feels it's too ambiguous as to the fact that this would remain in perpetuity. Therefore, it does not meet the Delta Stewardship goals in the Delta Plan. I believe a way that we could address their concerns would be to make it clearer that by county records, that is on title, and therefore, by recording, it's in perpetuity. We have had a discussion, and we believe that meets their needs. I believe that is more in keeping with the AgTAC's intent, which is to have the red line language, but to have it be recorded in perpetuity, as opposed to to go back to the language. I believe that what staff is asking you to do is to take the recommended action with an amendment to Section.
9-1080.6.
9-1080, it was originally .7, and now I believe in the red line is .6, let me just clarify that. And it would just be to add, after the red line line, what is now Section B, disposition of land, would be identified in county records and recorded on title. I believe that's maybe what staff is asking.
And that is correct, thank you, County Council. The easement itself would suffice as a record, and that was a clarification point.
Yeah.
So, do we have to change the motion on the floor to accept the amended wording?
If, I think the recommendation would be that you would just go ahead and amend your motion to add the words "and recorded on title" to Section 9-1080.6B as redlined.
I'll move to add the addendum.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Motion by. Midgley, and second by Mr. Ruustaller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Maury. Was that a yes? Thank you. Commissioner Ruustaller?
Yes.
Commissioner Midgley?
Yes.
Commissioner Grunske?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. I have the Director's Report, schedule of future meetings.
We'll have comments. Not everybody finished their comments.
Oh, excuse me.
I'm done. I'm done, I just want to make sure everybody got their.
Comments, alright.
15 minutes of fame.
Alright. Director's Report.
So, Chair and Commission, thank you for your indulgence with that. I just want to make sure, you know, usually, be as transparent as possible in terms of making sure what we're presenting to you is sometimes very late changes, and I just want to make sure that it's explained to you as thoroughly as we can. So, we've, in addition to the notes for this afternoon in regard to item number two, which you just heard, and some of the late comments that came in, there is an appeal for Project PA 1900247, and it's actually the variance to what I recall several months ago regarding the subdivision size of a home site. But I think it kind of relates back to the comments that one of the Commissioners, Commissioner Grunske, just made in regard to subdivision sites. And so, that's been appealed to the Board of Supervisors, and we're tentatively scheduled to have, or the Board is tentatively scheduled at this point to hear that item on July 7th, roughly a month or so away. So, that's that particular item. For June 4th, we do have a pretty substantial calendar, so I want to go through it with you there in the notes for this afternoon. About midway through the package, your notes for the afternoon, we've got about five items on here, in addition to the report back that the Commission just asked me to do for the Dylan and Murphy letters. There'll be six items for the June 4th calendar. So, the first one is a one-year time extension for existing truck parking facility, parking facility, and that's moving forward, a zone reclassification for a 14-and-a-half-acre parcel, so that'll be a rezone. That's a public hearing, a use permit for, to expand an existing small winery. That's the third item. The fourth item will be a use permit for a brining facility with expansion over a number of years. And then, we're also gonna have before you, I think this might be something newer to the Commission, that the Commissions will be seeing more annually now, is a annual progress report for the housing element that we have, that the county has adopted, which is good, from 2015 to 2023, and we'll be bringing back to you annual progress report on how we are doing on all of our income categories for our housing. And then, the sixth item, as I mentioned earlier, will be the report back on the letter you have before you from Mr. Murphy regarding the Ashley Ranch time extension itself. So, there's six items before you, so I think that's gonna be a pretty substantial agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Jumping to the 18th, it looks like there's quite a few items.
Yes, do you want me to go through that too? Okay, absolutely.
Any questions?
It would be a pretty significant agenda as well, with six to seven items. So. Okay, Chair, do you want me to go through? Yes, okay. See, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 items. And the first one is a use permit to establish a religious assembly facility for 185 people. And on the French Camp Road, East French Camp Road. A, the second one will be a use permit for expansion of an existing truck and trailer facility, terminal facility. The third item will be a one-year time extension for a previously approved, revisions of approved actions for a use permit for a existing large winery. The fifth, the next item, which is, I think, the fourth item. 1, 2, 3, the fourth item is for the Waterloo, and that's Marada Rural County Fire Protection District for a new fire station. The fifth item will be for a use permit for a 5,300-square-foot expansion of an existing religious assembly site. The sixth item is the, a Development Title Amendment to, and actually, let me, I'll go back to that sixth item in a second. I'm gonna skip to the seventh item first. A use permit for Dean and Connie there. A use permit for Dean and Connie there for a change in the use of historical resources pursuant to a development code change or development title change regarding their phasing, particularly in regard to a National Register Historical Places building. So I want to go back to the sixth item. The sixth item is something new that this commission may not have seen. It has been done in part by the county here in the past, back in 2009 and I think 2012, and this particular Development Title Amendment, or text amendment, is actually of interest statewide right now. There are a number of counties that are taking this approach. Sacramento County and Sacramento City has taken it. I know of both Napa and Sonoma Counties and other counties are moving forward as well. What it entails is a Development Title Amendment to automatically extend planning entitlements for approved projects that may have been built, partially built, or may not have been built yet, but they have approved timelines, and that will be heard by the commission on the 18th. It is something where a number of counties are looking at how to provide some economic relief in regard to the COVID, COVID-19, and what that is doing to the economic development issues out there, or having the specific economic development impacts and detrimental impacts in that regard. So that will be something significant that I think the commission will see in regard to what the staff is looking at and bringing forward to you on how we're trying to address it. And that will be seven items that you will have as a commission on June 18th.
Thank you. I did have one comment I wanted to come at the staff, but it ain't, our packet's out to us, we sure appreciate it coming out two weeks at a time gives us a lot of time, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Not, we're adjourned.
Yeah. I thought we were. Did you want Chair, can we, can we not leave yet and reopen? I want to talk about the next meetings, if that's okay?
Okay.
Reopen the meeting, if you can?
Okay, we'll reopen.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, so-- So we heard you last time, Chair and Commission, in regard to logistics of these future meetings or the meetings. It's been, we've been scrambling ever since we had to close down, like many other offices, after COVID-19 hit really hard. The, I think I mentioned last time, we were planning to reopen our counters, and we have done so actually as of this last Monday. So we've been figuring that out, and I think we've got a good handle on that. And then we're also wanting to work with the commission on future meetings. So what we're looking at is, as we heard some of the commissioners express, some public accessibility issues. So we are still under state health order, and therefore the county's health order not having mass gatherings still, so that will still be a constraint in the future until that order gets amended, so thus the reason for the telephonic and electronic type of meetings that we're going to need to have until, again, that order's changed. But in terms of, you know, hearing you and working out the logistics in how we would make this at least a little bit more accessible, we're looking at holding these meetings in the future, and I think we've actually done some early polling already in regard to, for the June 4th meeting and maybe June 18th meeting as well. So your commissioners should have emails from staff in that regard. We're looking at holding them at six o'clock, particularly because the ability to have a number of different things at six o'clock. Having security access to this building, security access to the parking lot, ISD or Information Systems Department support, in addition to clerk of the board support for being able to use this room and other kind of logistics in the background. So we did have some constraints, but we're looking at to see if six o'clock is in time, or is a time that a little bit more accessible, at least for people to be able to call in. But I think you also expressed some thoughts about where else we might want to be able to hold these meetings, so we've been checking around as well. And to the extent that, we have looked at other facilities like the Great Bowl and even Mickey Grove. We haven't been able to successfully contact anybody regarding Great Bowl, even though we made numerous attempts.
Great Festival?
Yeah, on there, Lodi, that facility. And then on top of that, Mickey Grove, the community center or the building out there, we found out, even though it's a county building, it would be a substantial charge to us. So if we were to hold two meetings a month, it's about $700 a meeting for us in additional charge, and that's not including any other kind of logistics for staffing and security or anything like that, if we needed to. But nevertheless, we still couldn't really have a public gathering anyways, so we'd be using that facility without the public gatherings, and on top of that, there's some real technical challenges about using that building in regard to Wi-Fi. So until the EOC building is available, which is still an EOC building at the Ag Center, which we're still looking at as an option, you know, that's, we're looking at moving there, but I just want to have this conversation with the commission in regard to some of the constraints we have, and do you have any other ideas for us to look for other facilities that we can look at that doesn't have some substantial fiscal impact to our department as well? So, you know, those are the kind of things that we will be looking at in regard to either having the meetings at a different location, or just technical challenges, or even access. So with that, Chair and Commission, those are my thoughts, and if you have any other comments.
Comment? What time can we hear and speak? Not working out too smoothly. Got to have a lot of applicants and probably some opposition. Meetings, we've got twelve different action items. What point can you just allow the applicants or minimal amount of opponents to come in and speak?
Definitely better process than today. Also-- Governor's order? As said, I expect that to be-- Are holding it? And-- Not be able to-- Definitely trying.
The applicants know that it's on a limited basis, they have to either call in or-- We have questions, how that's going to work?
That, I mean, that's what we've been doing. We thought, for example, today, we thought we had confirmation on people basically either actually, as part of the Ag Tech Committee, Tech Committee, for example, they were going to actually be here as a member of the Board, or be on phone, and it didn't work out smoothly, so we definitely need to work on that.
I would suggest that. Is there a way you could have them call in before the meeting starts to see that it actually works?
African-- That's--
Nothing better than a warm body.
That's a factual, fundamental difference.
And Chair, and definitely not, Zoe doesn't need to apologize, it's me, so I apologize, you know, I failed to make sure the logistics worked, so we'll definitely make sure we work on that better.
Any comments? We're adjourned.
I think it must hurt. But I-- Then I was getting--
Sign it?
I don't know what--
Turn to the page.